Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Corey Code, absent. Mary Daring.
Here.
Tom Hilbert.
Here.
Dylan Pauli here. Norm Pauli.
Here.
Matt.
Redozi.
Redozi is absent. Michelle Woodruff.
Here.
Read the participation rules. Please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Begin by stating your name and address. Give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issues being discussed. To ensure everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda, we may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow you one additional time period to provide new information. Please be respectful of the planning commission applicant and your neighbors. Thank you for attending. I need a motion to approve the minutes from April 11.
So moved.
So, hold second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Approving of the agenda.
Move to accept the agenda as printed?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Make sure everyone is supportive there.
We got them.
Okay. Okay, correspondence. Two reports from Richard Rick Duel on case oh five two two zero two two and oh six two zero two two.
Hello, hello.
I am here.
Okay, then we need a motion to accept their.
Make a motion to accept. For tools reporters.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Is that one motion for each or one motion?
That's for both.
Okay, good.
Okay, public hearings case. First case zero case P dash zero five dash two two Jamie Mark Mark Court. Mark who? Okay. Request special approval use for accessory structure that exceeds two hundred percent of the main building. Property is located at sixty five twenty seven Bronco Trail parcel number oh one. One dash oh two two dash zero 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 dash five seven five dash zero zero in conservation. C zone district.
We need a motion to open the floor for a public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Larry.
I'll support.
Michelle will support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. All right, Jamie, I guess if you have anything for us. It's your turn to your turn to speak.
I don't have anything. It's just I'm just trying to do a bar for my store. There is an existing barn that's not. Building this barn right in front of the other one. You see driver that comes in?
Okay.
It's just a matter of. I'll tell you.
Um.
Any other questions?
Questions.
Um, Kevin, you're.
I think you find it doing.
Okay.
It's in the northeast corner.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Section four. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
Yep, you can have a seat. Thanks.
We'll go over Mr. And we need a motion to make Mr. Mr. Duel's.
If you have to read the report and then we make a motion.
Then we make a motion. All right. Okay, this is a report on oh five oh two two special use. Good for territory. Special use approval for construction of a barn that exceeds two hundred percent of the size of the existing house. Existing houses, seven hundred and sixty eight square feet and the proposed accessory structure will be twelve hundred square feet in size. Finding effect property is located at sixty five twenty seven Bronco Trail, Opina. District standards parcels located in a conservation zoning district. And accessory built structures are allowed to in zoning district residential accessory buildings exceed two hundred percent of the main building ground floor area may be allowed only as a special use subject to the site plan approval. Lot area and width eighty acres. Thirteen hundred and twenty feet wide. The parcel is greatly greater than forty thousand square feet. And parcel is width is greater than one hundred fifty feet. Okay, parcel complies with standards accessory or building height accessory buildings may be constructed to equal the permitted maximum type of structures in conservation districts. So that height is just he's within okay. Okay, like lot coverage complies with standard setback complies with standards front yard resident front yard residential accessory building is located in the front yard, which is allowed under section three zero five point B. Dot B dot one applies with standards location relative to main building standards. Okay, section six oh two special land use approval standards, the use location size. The use location and size of the structure, use and the nature intent and intensity of operation shall not be used as to disrupt the orderly and proper development of the district as a whole or be in conflict with or discourage the principal permitted use of the center neighboring lands and buildings, no potential issues. And I done it. Identify the standard as met. Special land use shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of traffic noise, dust, vibration, smoke, glare, flashing lights, disposal waste. And then other than the operation of any principal permitted use, no potential issues identified. Standard has been met, the use shall not increase hazards from fire dangers to either the property or adjacent structures, no potential issues identified, the standard has been met, the planning commission may consider the potential impact on property values or nearby properties when determining the impact of a proposed special land use on the adjacent properties, no potential issues identified, center has been met. Traffic and access, the use shall not increase traffic hazard or cause congestion in pub on the public highways and streets of the area adequate access to a use shall be furnished by either existing roads or in highways or proposed roads and highways, no potential issues identified, center has been met, public service, the water supply and switch disposal system shall be adequate for proposed use, center has been met. The use will be adequately well adequately will be adequately served by essential public services and the facility or person's responsible for the establishment of the proposed use will be will adequately provide any such service or facility, the standard has been met. The use will not create excessive additional public cost and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the township, no potential hazard issues identified, standard has been met. Natural resources, proposed expansion of the garage will not create substantially negative impact on the natural resources of the township or the natural environment as a whole. Potential issues identified, the standard has been met. The use will not impair the purpose and intent of this ordinance, no potential issues identified, the standard has been met. Summary of findings based on analysis of the information provided, the structure, construction of barn meets the ordinance standards.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, we have three options to approve, approve with conditions or deny.
I'd like a motion to approve the special land use for construction of the barn located at sixty five twenty seven Bronco Trail, Opina, Michigan. And parcel number zero one one oh two two zero 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 five seven five zero zero based on findings back contained in this report.
Support.
Okay. Any questions, any discussion?
Okay, we have to do roll call, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Corey.
Support.
Mary Daring.
Yes.
Tom Hilbert.
Yes.
Dylan Pauli. Yes. Norm Pauli.
Yes.
Michelle Woodruff.
Yes.
So there was no, no, we didn't have any conditions. Okay. Okay, you're good. Yeah, okay. Okay, sounds like you're gonna improve the area with a new, new structure and take down the old one, so. I usually have a stamp to stamp something, but she didn't put it out, so, but you are it'll be reflected in the minutes that the motion was approved. Oh, you're not, okay.
There was just two.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, case number two, case P zero six. P dash zero six dash two two Jerry and Mary Donikowski request a special approval use for the expansion of a nonconforming accessory building. Property is located at one zero two four Terry Lane parcel number zero one two dash zero two nine dash zero 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 dash eight five nine dash zero zero in a one family residential R one zone district.
We need a motion to open the floor for a public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
Oh. And extend our garage. Right on the fence line. And with the extension going back ten feet from the back fence. Side is very alacrity, basically twenty two and a half, twenty three on the outside by fifteen and sixteen. But we're asking permission to increase by a hundred percent. That's fine. But on the south side of the lot would be hugging the fence line. But we did get a commission from the coordinator to the south of us, which is Scott McKenzie. To if, if the drip line goes over the fence line, it's not a problem. Mission we got. Scott, we still gotta get it signed by Shirley. We forgot to get it checked. Sign by Shirley. That's him. So I, I guess that's they think it's the best line. Real close. But if I were to put a garage on the other side, we'd have to put it on the other side. We do have room on the other side, but then it would be all the way on the other side. And talking to Nate Skitty, it seemed like this was our best approach to putting, putting that garage. Because the people had now, I'm not counting. So we're asking permission to extend our garage back ten feet. Which would bring total garage space of probably forty four feet or so, forty five feet by fifteen and sixteen. Why?
Thank you.
Oh, and the other thing too is we wanted to ask special permission. If it is granted to us that we could extend the one year limit on this permission to put a garage in because we're having our we had several calls up to contract. On his side, there's some work in the inside that's involved. We are having a problem in the contract.
Well, I I don't think you'd, you would get your building permit till you have somebody on board to do the construction, right? So.
Yeah, and I think nobody wants to touch it.
Yeah, well, no, I don't blame them. Yeah.
That's probably.
Yeah. But yeah, I don't, we, that's not unusual that somebody goes over the year. Yeah. Just so you're, you know, progressing, you have an end in mind, that's all. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Corey.
I did go over to the house and I talked to these nice folks and what they're going to do and go where they're going about it. See absolutely no issues whatsoever.
Thank you, Mark. We make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Yeah, I was just wondering on the side setbacks. The setback to the cell. You said it.
Oh.
When I was there, I stopped by today and I, and I talked to Mary and
Yeah.
And it, you mentioned it was noncon, I'm not, it's nonconforming now?
Yeah. Pretty close to the front.
Okay. So we don't need setbacks then? But we don't need to.
There is a unique situation. Being on a private drive.
Okay, okay, Ben. So we, my question, it's only border appeals. There's the, we don't need a variance. That's not, that's where I'm, no, okay, all right. I was just, and why don't we need a variance?
The way it's set on, way it on a private drive that maybe most are not over any of the property. They don't have their, they don't even have their front back.
Okay.
They don't look that.
Okay.
They're not going into it right away.
I guess if you're if we needed variance, you guys would have pushed it to the variance. Okay. Okay, that's fine. And I guess you mentioned that you're gonna have a letter from Mrs. McKenzie.
We have a letter wrote up, signed by Scott, but.
Okay, and I guess if we.
And Scott is basically.
Right, yeah, and I know, yeah, I guess that if we approve it, that would probably be a condition that you get that letter sent. That's, yeah.
Fact finding reports.
Okay, no, the fact finding report part by Mr. Duel here. I guess I don't have to read all the pretty clear, it's a twenty three by fifty and a half foot wide structure. Probably is that twenty twenty four Terry Lee. Ten twenty four Terry Lee parcels in R one zone accessory structures are allowed. Lot and area width parcel applies, parcel height structure applies, lot coverage comply setbacks. Existing garage does not need setbacks, which is a reason for the being nonconform structure, the purpose proposed extension. Followed the same building line. Of the south wall and the garage. Deeper into setback, okay. Section three, three twelve nonconformities, no structure, maybe enlarged or altered in any way, which increases its nonconformity. Both extensions, both the same building line. South wall of the garage and not approach deeper into the current setback, the standard net enlargement, expansion, alteration, or relocation on a parcel. Expansion, enlargement of special use by special use planning commission by issuance of a special land use approval may allow what that what is not allowed in section subsections B, C, and D above. Provide that it is conclusively shown that such extension not reduce the value of the, of us. Limit lawful use of the adjacent premises, the standard has been met, will essentially retain the character environment of body premises, the standard has been met, will not perpetuate material, materially increase the any nuisance aspects of the use adjacent uses such as noise, flare, traffic congestion, mortal and overcrowding extended has been section, section six oh two, adjacent uses, the use location and size of use and nature and intensity of the operation shall not be such that it as to disrupt the orderly and properly development of the district as a whole or be in conflict with or discourage the principal permitted uses of adjacent or neighboring lands and buildings, no potential issues identified. Standard has been met, special land use shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of traffic noise, vibration, dust, fume, smoke, glare, flashing lights, or disposal of waste, the operation of any principal permitted use and potential issues identified, the standard has been met, the use shall not increase hazards and fire and other dangers to either property or adjacent properties. Potential issues identified, the center has been met, planning commission may consider the potential impact on the property values of nearby properties when determining the impact of the proposed land use on adjacent properties, no potential issues, standard has been met. Traffic and access, the use shall not increase traffic hazard or cause congestion on public highway streets, land streets of the area adequate access to use shall be furnished by either existing roads or highways or proposed roads and highways, no potential no issue, potential issues identified, the standard has been met, water supplies were disposal shift system shall be adequate for proposed use, the standard has been met. The use shall be adequately served by essential public services. So these are the persons responsible for the establishment of the proposed use. Adequately provide any such service or facilities. Standard has been met, the use will not create excessive additional public cost and will not determine be detriment to the economic welfare of township, no potential issues identified, the standard has been met. Expansion of the garage will not create a substantially negative impact on the natural resources or the township or the natural environment as a whole. Potential issues identified, the standard has been met. Generally, the use will not impair the purp, proposed purpose and intent of this ordinance, potential issues identified, center has been met. Okay, so based on summary of findings of the information provided, the expansion of the garage meets the ordinance standards. So again, we have three options to approve. The approve, approve with conditions or deny.
I make a motion for special use case for a nonconforming accessory building located at ten twenty four Terry Lane, Opina, Michigan. Parcel number oh one two oh two nine zero 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 eight five nine zero zero based on the findings of fact contained in report oh six two two.
Support.
Okay, and my comment is that the letter, we need to
That's what I was gonna add.
Yeah, they need the letter from.
Friendly amendment.
Okay, so should we do roll call first or we do want to amend your motion with the condition of the letter?
Probably amend that.
Amend the motion, amend the condition with them to approve Richard Duel's fact finding report.
And then the permission, permission of the adjacent owner to the cell.
Do you need a letter?
The letter, yes, they'll have to supply the letter before they can, you know, get their.
Issue the permit.
Yes, and Kevin's aware of that, so. Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
That's fine.
Just before you start, that's all. So that'll be in the, in the motion, so, okay.
Okay.
Okay, read it back, please.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Richard Duel's findings report and to approve the special land use for the expansion of the nonconforming accessory building located at ten twenty four Terry Lane, Opina, Michigan. On parcel number zero one two zero two nine zero 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 eight five nine zero zero. Based on the findings of the fact contained in report oh six two two. With the condition that you will supply the letter from the Mackenzies. Supported by Corey.
Corey's supported. Okay, then now we'll do a roll.
Roll call, Corey.
Yes.
Mary Daring.
Yes.
Tom Hilbert.
Yes.
Dylan Pauli. Yes. Norm Pauli.
Yes.
And Michelle Woodruff.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other?
Go ahead.
Could we have extend the permit for maybe a year and a half or we're gonna get it done soon.
So I mean, is, so is this, I guess I'm not even sure right now what the this is only good for one year?
The building permits.
The building permit is on, but this, this motion doesn't have an expiration date.
No.
So Kevin would work with you on the building permit, yeah. This no, yeah, no, but this special use does not have a yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for stopping by.
Yeah. I didn't even know it was there until.
Terry Lee.
Yeah.
And it's possible.
Well, he wants you to improve your property so he can up your taxes a little bit. Not me.
You might not have your garage built by then, so. That's the tough part.
It is really, everybody's saying that.
I have a couple people at work that can't get anyone to even just do siding, you know, it's, that is what it is. Nope.
No, I don't think we have.
The next meeting date is scheduled for June thirteenth. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Go ahead.
There's a planning and zoning essential workshop in Scottsdale, June twenty second. Do you wanna check with our supervisor and see or our clerk? And see if that's something anybody interested in attending, I think, somebody.
I, I, cuz they sent it to me and I asked them if they wanted to open it to everybody and they'd never replied.
Did you get an email on it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So did I.
Is that the same email that Lynn, Lynn sent out?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So I think it sounds good and it's a decent time, cost is Fair. Uh, I think it's something I would be interested in going to. I can mention to the ward tomorrow night.
This is the, this isn't the MTA one.
No, the MTA one is another.
That's, yeah, that's a different one.
Yes.
That's the twenty first, I think.
That's the one I got.
That's the one too cuz it was also it was the nineteenth. And then it was a YouTube thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But that was in May, this one's in June.
Can you can we have that to Lynn so she can send it out or whatever?
Okay, the Donikovskys have one more question.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes, Lynn Lynn or, yeah, the building department there, yes. Probably, yeah. She'll tell you what she wants and you know, you can call her and ask her and she'll tell you what she wants, if she wants it original or what.
For the next meeting.
Yeah.
It's a training opportunity, usually.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not sure what she wants, probably wants original, but, yeah.
Yeah. We have another question, Jamie.
Go ahead. Yes, yeah. And like I told Don Custis, your special approval is we don't have a time limit on that, so, yeah.
When you get your build is six months there.
Okay.
That is one of the progress.
I support your motion to adjourn.
Thank you, leaving adjourned.